This evening.
Thank you so much. Student government.
Hi, so as you all know, in today's day and age, everyone's always on their phones. So something that often annoys students when they come into school is that, oh, my phone didn't charge last night, now I have to deal with a whole day and not going without it. So something that SGA just did in the high school to help combat that and make students' days a little better, we put two charging stations in the cafeteria and one in the lobby, and that has charging cords for both Apple and Android phones, so that students can charge their phones in their free periods or study halls or before class starts, just to make their day a little bit better and help mitigate something that could happen unfortunately to make their day a little bit more sad.
So the big thing coming up for SGA is the Staff Appreciation Week, which will run for the week of May 6th, and during that whole week, each day we'll be appreciating a new section of our staff, so one day will be teachers, another day will be lunch ladies, and then crossing guards and bus drivers, and also we'll do the janitors as well. So that whole week, we'll be appreciating our staff for all the help that they do for us.
Wonderful. Great idea on the charging stations, too. PTA, PTO council.
Hello, hi. Starting off with Abraham Lincoln Elementary, Lincoln will be holding their spring book fair from April 29th to May 3rd. Every student in the school who met their AAR goal for the third nine weeks will receive $5 from their PTO to spend at the book fair. Kindergarten students had to read five books and also will receive the $5 from the PTO. The students are very excited about this program. The annual science fair and the art expo will be held on May 2nd at Abraham Lincoln. Ben Franklin Elementary, April has been full of giving back at Ben Franklin. They kicked off their Autism Acceptance and Awareness and Change Collection, April 1st, and it's been a wonderful success. Ben Franklin's Kids of Steel are training hard all month for the marathon on May 4th. They had a very successful spring Sarah's Candy Sale as well. Ben Franklin hosted their first family photo session with Redford Photography this year, and then graciously, the company donated a portion of sales towards Ben's PTO fundraising. Looking ahead, Ben Franklin has an ice cream social planned this Friday and a spirit night scheduled with Chick-fil-A. George Washington students are also part of the We Run Club, and they've been participating in weekly runs on the Montour Trail along with Mrs. Williams, and parent volunteers are getting ready for their fun trail run on Thursday, April 25th. Their 15th Annual Talent Show was truly the greatest show on earth, with 4th grade students and staff performing the song "The Greatest Show" from the movie The Greatest Show on Earth. Many other talented singers, baton twirlers, dancers, gymnasts, comedians, and musicians filled the night at Independence Middle School. It was an amazing night, and everyone had a great time. George Washington parents are working on activities to show their appreciation for the staff at George Washington during Staff Appreciation Week, April 29th through May 1st. They're also preparing for Student Appreciation Week from May 6th to May 10th. May will be a busy month, with sports day scheduled for May 22nd, and then a family fun night scheduled for them for May 31st. Memorial Elementary, in May, Memorial is having their annual Fun Fair Field Day and Field Trips. Memorial is wrapping up the school year with a brain cancer awareness quarter drive to benefit Shawn Rovers Smiles for Shawn, and is cosponsored by Children's Hospital. Shawn Rovers is a NAMM student who was diagnosed with a CSN sarcoma last year while he was a student at Memorial. He's had two surgeries to remove tumors from his brain, and during his hospital stays, met many kids who were experiencing the same things. Smiles from Shawn provides pick-me-ups, which are delivered to kids staying at Children's Hospital for cancer treatment. At William Penn Elementary, William Penn, we held our annual Washington Wild Things Read-a-thon, where the kids raised over $1,600, and then participating kids get to attend a Washington Wild Things baseball game. Our spring Sarah's Candy Sale was a success, raising over $1,000. Our ice cream social last week was a glow party, which is a huge success. We had over 300 people in attendance, glowing lights, a neon dance floor, and light-up jewelry added to the fun. Volunteers from the Boy Scout troop scooped over 15 gallons of ice cream, and guests had fun decorating and adding toppings for sundaes. It was such a huge success that we wanted to thank Neil Armstrong Elementary School. We actually had to end up moving it from our small school into Neil Armstrong because of the code from our small school. Looking forward, our first annual mom prom fundraiser is planned for May 4th at the community center. It's slated to be our biggest fundraiser of the year, and it'll include an auction, prizes 50/50, along with a dinner dance for our moms. The PTO and staff at Penn are purchasing a tree and planting it in memory of our former principal, Nicole Morris. It'll be planted in the circle out front of the school, and I believe that was done this week in memory of her. And then Fun Day is scheduled for May 22nd. It's our end-of-the-year field day, and is currently being planned by the PTO for the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do. Wonderful. Solicitor's report? Any committee report?
Just two bits of information from the, one from the Shade Tree Commission. The planned tree planting this week at Neil Armstrong is postponed until the fall because once we decided that the trees were going to be a little bit bigger, believe it or not, they can't find trees in five, the nursery can't find them. So it's not a matter of cost or anything, it's just a matter, so they're going to order them and get them in in the fall, which is a better time to plant anyway. And then the rec board, the only thing is that the challenge grants are still being accepted through May, and that's if a recreation program in Bethel Park is interested in working with the rec department to provide some kind of field improvement or facility improvement, that there's a matching grant available. And those, that challenge grant is still open, so if you know of anyone, please apply.
And there's also going to be a rededication on May 4th of Simmons, right?
Simmons, right, right, I forgot about that, yeah. Rededicating the playground at Simmons, which is fabulous for all of us grandparents who watch our grandkids. We put them on that zip line and, there they go.
That's great. Thank you so much. Mrs. Rule.
My report from Shast is this Saturday, we will be having our breakfast, in which we recognize two students from each of the sending schools. Bethel Park will have two students in attendance, and these are students that have overcome challenges throughout the year, whether they be physical, mental, or academic, or just some personal challenges, and we will be recognizing them. Also, at Steel Center, they had their National Technical Honor Society program, and those students have to meet the criteria that their home school has, so that it's equal. Also, we have been visiting some of the other career and technical education schools to see what they offer and how they're structured, because our school's 50 years old, and it needs to be updated from the building standpoint, and also, you know, classes have changed, technology has changed, and trades have changed, so we're looking at other schools as to what they're offering and what we can change at Steel Center. For Pathfinder, Cindy, they had their water checked, and it passed, so we were good there. And from the AIU, that building also is 16 years old, looking at some major expenses coming up, and they wanted to have the building assessed, because all of the school districts, 42 school districts have an investment. They own part of the AIU. So that building was evaluated to be $4.1 million. They have to decide now, can they replicate that building, do they moderate what to do? So that was under discussion, once we got the evaluation. They talked about their conference this year, wondered why, we've had a big turnover in school board members in the last five years, and why they're not attending educational workshops and the conferences, and it seems like technology's taken over. They want to either see it on a webinar, you know, see it sent to them on YouTube, but they don't want to attend another meeting, and that seems to be an issue in many organizations, not only just in education. And the other thing that we discussed was dyslexia that came up, and, you know, Bethel, long before my kids went to school, was the first school that had the first classroom for children that had learning disabilities. And it was started by Dr. Marone, who happened to be superintendent and was a special needs teacher at one time. We used to house students from other districts, they would pay us, because we had the classroom and the education set up. Through the years, we've been known for taking care of all of our special needs children and for providing the support, and that's what most of the real estate people say people come to Bethel Park, because they know that their children will be well taken care of with a good education. The good thing is that they finally, after a couple of years, they've been talking about it, decided that Pennsylvania is a poor-performing state in the United States in terms of dyslexia, that particular learning disorder. And I understand they're going to be coming down on the state pretty hard, and there's going to be a major overhaul of how the needs will be met of children that have dyslexia, starting with how the teachers are taught in the teaching colleges on down. So that's really of big interest to me, so I'm very glad to hear that. And one last thing that isn't in this category, but Bethel Park's going to be having a job fair, its first job fair, for anyone that has someone that's looking for employment, particularly in the trades, but there'll be other industries there. It'll be held at the community center on May 16th from 3:00 to 8:00 o'clock.
Mrs. Rule, if you don't mind, I'd like to comment. One of the topics you brought up was the online courses for, or the courses the AIU offers for school board members. I've taken several of the online courses through the BSBA, and I find them very useful and vital, because I haven't really seen a lot in that format offered by the AIU. Are they talking about starting to create more programs in that?
Yeah, they are, they're looking at other options, even for their conferences and their special, you know, educational sessions.
And I'd also like to mention about the trades, the union apprenticeships offer very good trade schools that are free, you get paid while you go, good careers with health benefits. It's something that I think a lot of our students should be looking more into, and maybe if we could do something as a district that'll point them in that direction.
Yeah, we have, we have, in fact, Dr. Pasquarelli and I met with two of the trade schools, in fact, that offer training. We can get training for the students, and we can possibly even get the tuition covered. This particular job fair, $50 from everyone at Exhibits will go toward a scholarship for one of the trades students. So we're really actively trying to get students to look at other opportunities. College isn't for everybody, so we need to know that those opportunities are out there, particularly right in our industrial park. I mean, you have a company over there where someone starts out at $18 an hour, they will make sure that that student, you know, will get training, they get their lunch is paid for, their healthcare is paid for, free parking, I mean, that's a great opportunity, but our students don't recognize what's out there, or we're just so college-oriented that we don't think about there are other career pathways out there that are open, and right now, they are coming up with money on the federal level and the state level, because it's a critical shortage, and we need those people, and we have to start encouraging some of our students to look in that direction.
And when she was talking about the water being tested at Pathfinder, our principal there got a grant to do the lead water testing there, that's what that was. Public comments on agenda items, agenda items only. Anything? Okay, then we'll move into business items, and Personnel Committee, Mrs. Rule, I would ask you to deal with number one separately as we begin.
Okay. I move that we approve the ratification of the Federation Secretaries of the Bethel Park CBA.
Second.
It has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means that we ratify the Federation Secretary's CBA. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. The board is pleased to approve this new contract between the Bethel Park School District and the Federation Secretaries Unit, which runs through June 30th, 2025, and covers our 18 union secretaries. And we are especially pleased to reach this new six-year agreement more than two months before the existing agreement ends. As we have done with the previous contracts that have been approved, we have invited the leadership of the secretaries unit to be present with us, as we officially sign the agreement in front of the public and celebrate this important occasion. Before we make this new agreement official, I want to take this opportunity to thank our school secretaries for the outstanding job they do, day in and day out. In many instances, you are the first person a visitor or caller comes in contact with, and oftentimes, you are the ones who have to handle a variety of sometimes difficult issues. With first impressions often being lasting impressions, it is important that you handle all issues appropriately, and we appreciate your professional and helpful presence on the front lines. We also appreciate your continued professionalism throughout the negotiating process and value your commitment to our school district. We look forward to continuing to work with you as our valued partners in education. Union President Jaclyn Wilcox, her negotiating team, I don't see Annie Ball here tonight, she didn't make it tonight, and Lisa Federowski, as well as Dr. Pasquarella and Mr. Karazzi, please join me at the table. Okay, Mrs. Rule, I'll turn it back over to you for the rest of Personnel Committee.
Okay, I move items two through 16.
I'd like to hold out 11 and 12A, please.
Okay.
I would also like to hold out 13B.
11 and 12A.
11, 12?
11 and 12A.
And 13B, 1 and 3.
Wait, 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 13?
B.
B.
1 and 3.
1 and 3, okay. Okay. I move item two, Approval of Extra Duty Responsibility Program, 2018 to 19. Approval of extra duty, oh, that's a three. Acceptance of Resignations, Individual Memorandum of Agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, Individual Memorandum of Agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, Individual Memorandum of Agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, Individual Memorandum of Agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, Individual Memorandum of Agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, Individual Memorandum of Agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. I move 12B and B and 13B.
13A.
What was it?
13A.
Oh, 13, 13A, 1 and 2, and B, 2, 4, 5, 6. Approval of Extended School Year Program, Approval of Summer Help for Cathedral Maintenance, and Approval of Substitutes.
Second.
We still have 14 and 15.
Okay, items two through 10, 12B, 13A, 1 and 2, 13B, 2, 4 through 7, and 14 through 16, have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Nagel. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mrs. Rule.
Okay, I move item 11, Involuntary Transfers.
Second.
Item 11, A, 1 and 2, has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Ammets. Any questions or comments on these items?
Yes, I would like to say that as well as 12A, I'll save the trouble on 12A, operate under the assumption that the class sizes are adequate in elementary schools, which I disagree with.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
How many, show of hands, 1, 2, 3? That passes 6 to 3. Mrs. Rule.
Okay, Change of Assignment, A, 1 and 2.
Second.
Item, that was 12A, 1 and 2, 12A, 1 and 2, has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, again, show of hands.
Okay.
That carries 6 to 3.
Appointment of Personnel, B, 1 and B, 3.
Yes, I.
I need a second first.
Second.
Second.
Item 13B, 1 and 3, has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I do have a question first. At the committee meeting last week, I had asked if these were new positions. I went back to the last regular meeting, we had one paraposition that we voted on at that meeting. At the committee meeting, we discussed three, and now we have two on the agenda. I'm sorry if I'm not really grasping the process, but I think, you know, I have asked repeatedly for some kind of graphic to see our needs versus our staffing levels, and that would help me with that also, and I still don't fully believe that the part-time parapositions are fulfilling our needs, and I just wanted to gain some more clarification on how it fluctuates from a regular meeting to a committee meeting to the next regular meeting, if these are positions that have been ongoing positions that we're trying to fill.
So the difference is, is if we have positions that are available at a committee meeting, we list them all, we then put on the agenda, if you have a complete packet and we have somebody to hire. And sometimes those are retroactively done, if they complete the packet ahead of time, and sometimes they're prepared for the agenda. So from, to use the example, from last week to this week, there were three positions, two of them are able to be filled, one we still are working on getting.
But there's, there is a TBD position on the agenda yet. On page two, on the second page of that?
I believe that's the one that's going to be for the following school year. We're, so the person's not, they turned it, they turned it in, but they're not, they're going to be here to the end of the year.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That carries eight to one. Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Dobus, will you take that for me?
Sure. Under the Curriculum Committee, we have six items. Are there any items that anyone would like to have held out?
Yes, one, please.
Okay. I would like to move two, the Forensics League National Tournament, three, the Speech and Debate National Forensic League Tournament, four, the Approval of the Orton Gillum Training, five, the Approval of the Windsor Learning Sunday System Training, six, the Approval of the Student Assistance Program Training.
Second.
Items two through six under Curriculum have been moved by Mrs. Dobus and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mrs. Dobus.
I'd like to move number one, under Curriculum Committee, the Curriculum Facilitators for 2019, 2020.
Second.
Item one under Curriculum has been moved by Mrs. Dobus and seconded by Mr. Nagel. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, I do have. I have a quick question. Dr. Pasquarella, these are all mandated positions by the contract, aren't they? They're, they're in the contract, correct. I have a two-part question. The first part is, what exactly is the role, or a general scope of the role of a curriculum facilitator? And the second part of my question is, would I, as a board member, be able to reach out to these people to get their, get their opinions or views on their particular departments?
Well, the general role of the curriculum facilitator is to work in conjunction with our administrative teams and their department. They often serve as the person that works with the principal and higher administration on budgeting for needs. They also can run and facilitate meetings and some trainings at times. And we meet often, Mr. Wells has been going to meet with some of them individually, but we also try to have meetings throughout the year where we get together as a group to discuss some of the issues facing. I mean, there's a lot more to it, but that's some general highlights of what the job entails. And, I mean, I guess my, my take is, is that I would just always recommend that it would probably be best if you have some specific questions or you wanted to get some feedback, that you work in conjunction with, you know, myself as superintendent and the administration to get some, some feedback. And, I mean, I guess my, my take is, is that I, I would just always recommend that it would probably be best if you have some specific questions or you wanted to get some feedback, that you work in conjunction with, you know, myself, superintendent and the administration to get some, some feedback as to what you're, you're looking for. That would be what I would say.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Dr. Pascarella, normally, normally if there's a need for new textbooks or something like that, would that be initiated by the curriculum facilitator?
I would say that they would, they could have a role, definitely, in, in, in that, an active role, because they're meeting with their departments and looking at budgetary needs and looking at some things that they want to try to prioritize from their department as part of their role and work, work with the administration. I wouldn't say it's the only way, but I think it's an appropriate channel.
Okay, thank you.
At some point, we, or the administration has authorized a curriculum committee of staff, correct, to do a in-depth curriculum review?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, in order to recommend, you know, new textbooks or massive changes to curriculum, we have to authorize a curriculum committee. Isn't that how it works?
So, I would say that, you know, if it comes out, you know, from the curriculum facilitator and the administration, we work together and it looks like something that we are going to do, you know, major overhaul and rewriting curriculum or picking a major, you know, resource, then yes, we would probably look to create the committee and, and review that.
Do we have any plans in the near future? It kind of relates to this position here also. I mean, are any of these going to be leading any, in the, in the future, you know, any major curriculum review initiatives?
Well, I know that we've been working to try to mainstream with the union an appropriate way to go through that process. We've been talking about, we've had some discussions, none of them have been finalized, but in negotiation work and talking about how could we best do this so that it's more an ongoing fluid document as opposed to something that only happens every so many years? We haven't reached an agreement on that. Recently, as I think I mentioned before, we have looked at mathematics, we've done ELA and K to four. I think we've also ELA bought some materials in seven to eight. So, to answer your question, I think some of the things that we've been doing too are just, you know, if you move from one edition to another edition, for example, on a textbook, that's something that doesn't always necessarily need to bring an entire committee together. That's something that we can move forward on. Or supplemental materials, that's another thing that doesn't always have to have a full committee. We could talk to some teachers and, and move in that direction. So, yeah, if it's necessary, we'll have them.
Can I, can I ask a hypothetical question? If there were to be changes at some particular course, I'll just pick algebra for some reason, let's say Algebra II, if they wanted to change that particular course, would that involve a whole curriculum committee? Or is a curriculum committee have more to do with like doing the whole mathematics structure through the high school?
Well, I think in that hypothetical, it depends, it depends on how great the change is. If you're looking at supplemental materials and just trying to support the given, you know, material, then I don't know that we would need an entire committee. But if we were looking at saying, hey, here are the standards and the eligible content that needs to be, you know, updated and structured in a scope and sequence, then yes, we'd have to create one.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All in favor of item one under Curriculum, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Workmeister.
Okay, Mrs. Cook, we have two items under Facilities and Services. Would anybody like any of them held out? Okay. I move for item one, approval of upgrading the fire alarm system at the administration building. And two, air compressors for the bus garage. Second?
I would just like to make a comment. On number one, it's TBD because that's the not to exceed, but we're still waiting on getting that last quote. Mr. Keith, thank you for working on that. I know over the holiday break, we haven't got, you know, everything back. But when we do, we'll look and put the lowest cost, you know, retroactively on in May, hopefully. And on the number two, I know it's an addition. I think it's something that we needed to attain pretty quickly for our bus garage, an air compressor that's going to be able, or two, we're actually purchasing, to be able to obviously do everything they need to do at the bus garage, and that was timely.
So, for number one, we're voting on approving the not to exceed number?
Right. So, if, if, we have to get a third quote anyway, we have a call out to a couple, so let's say the third quote from, you know, John Doe came in at ten, then we would be bubbling in ten, John Doe Company.
Okay. Well, something you said raises a little bit of an alarm to me, the lowest cost. As I said in the committee meeting, it, this is a very specialized thing that is very intricate. I have some experience with it, the lowest cost. How are we verifying that the lowest cost is also going to be the best quality? And dovetailing with our system the best?
Mr. Keith. I would defer a little bit to the solicitor on that, in, in general, when you get these?
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is a quote, so you can look at, at various things, but in general, you are, I mean, you know, Mr. Keith has contacted, he's responsible for contacting the companies. So, on a quote, on a bid, you don't have, you don't have that ability to do that. You put a bid out, and then you do the lowest responsive. We are required at that point to accept the lowest responsible bidder. And then the determination and recommendation is made based on whether or not everybody who bids is responsible. However, on quotes, we control that. So, I assume Mr. Keith is, is contacting companies that, that he knows are reputable and able to perform the job. I wouldn't expect that he would be contacting somebody that, you know, a company on a quote, he's doing contacting, that wouldn't be able to, to, to perform the, the work.
So, one of those, I believe, we work frequently with, right? One of them that we have. And the other one we have, you have some knowledge of.
Yes.
And the other, the other quotes that, you know, you're attempting to get are the ones that you shared with us.
I think, part of Ken's question was last week, you know, maybe you can clarify this, because I think you're asking the same question, is are we evaluating this purely on upfront capital cost or, or, you know, equipment cost? Or are we looking at this at a, at a lifetime cost, or say, a five-year cost, whatever the expected life? Because if you're paying a service fee, a monthly service fee or something like that.
Every time we retune, I'm sorry, Mr. Guns, I'm sorry. Yeah, every time we retune the buildings, it can be complex or can be simple. Okay, so what we're doing right now is, we're looking to retune the buildings with the cost effectiveness at the same time. So, I always want to make sure it's apples versus apples instead of apples versus oranges. And one of the companies that give us the lowest bid so far, they work on all our systems, they're familiar with our systems, our maintenance staff is familiar with them, and they're familiar with the system they supply.
Yeah, okay.
I would add, knowing you, Mr. Keith, it's not apples with apples, it's probably Macintosh with Macintosh. I mean, you know.
I appreciate it.
So, it's pretty detailed. And as a board member, we can always look at these companies since we have the knowledge ahead of time to go research them ourselves if we're in doubt to see whether there's any bad reports on them that, you know, maybe it's not available. And we would get back to Mr. Keith or whoever on these quotes and see if we have some questions about it. But I, I didn't see anything wrong with these two companies. I mean, you know, they're reputable, and it's always good to be double sure, though, and, you know, but with Mr. Keith doing that, I think we're always in safe hands here.
Items one and two under Facilities and Services have been moved by Mr. Workmeister and seconded by Mr. Means. Are there any other questions or comments on these two items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Finance Committee and Mr. Amadis.
Yeah, we have eighteen items under Finance Committee this evening. Would anybody want any of these held out?
How about number four?
Number seven, please.
Any more?
There are no others. I move items one through three, number five and six, and number eight through eighteen.
Need a second?
Second.
Items one through three, five and six, and eight through eighteen under Finance Committee have been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mr. Amadis.
I move number four, adopted two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Opposed, final general opinion?
Second.
Item number four has been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on this item?
I would just like to commend Mr. Karazi on the, all of the changes that he's gone through. And maybe you could give us a brief, like, for the public. Go ahead, yeah. A brief.
I'll just go over the first slide a little bit. The draft six was eighty-eight million, one hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars in revenue. Eighty-nine million, one hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-seven dollars in expenditures. And we've used nine hundred ninety-five thousand of the fund balance. That's where we're at with the proposed final budget. I'm working on draft seven right now. Probably have draft seven and maybe draft eight before we do the final.
Is this available for the public to take a look at?
This sheet, this sheet is not, but the proposed final budget will be available for the public to look at.
Before next month's meeting?
It'll be probably starting tomorrow.
Okay, so people can find it online, is that what you're saying?
We, we put it in the building. We could probably put it online too, if we'd like us to do that.
We usually had it in the building here and I think at the public library before, is that where?
Last couple of years, we put it here.
Just here?
Just here.
So, somebody who wants a copy of the next draft could come up here and get a copy of it?
Well, the draft, it'll be, draft six is what the proposed final budget is. That's what's on the, that'll be what's on display. Draft seven and eight will not be on display until it's approved final. If it's, if we do eight, we might stop at seven, I don't know. We haven't got that for you. We'll be, we have a month to do more drafts, so we'll keep working on it. We won't put on display draft seven, then we won't put on draft eight. We, we're putting on draft six because that's proposed final budget.
Okay.
It will change though.
The, the final draft that we vote on for next school year is May?
Yes.
And this is no mileage increase in here?
Propose using fund balance until we use fund balance, and then we'll have to look at something.
Do you, do you anticipate using all that fund balance, or is that just?
I don't. We haven't, we've been using fund balance the last three or four years, and we haven't even come close to using it yet.
Thank you.
Yeah, our, our budget proposals forecasted using fund balance, but we didn't because of costs.
We did, actually, we didn't.
We didn't use it, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor of item four under Finance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. Mr. Amadis.
I move number seven, the P S B A membership dues renewed.
Second.
Item number seven has been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Nagel. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yes, I do. First thing is, like I've said, I've used P S B A as a resource to myself as a school board member several times in several different ways, from online courses, new school director booklet. I've called them, like, for instance, when we were having the town hall over the summer to verify that we weren't violating any open meetings act. It's been a tremendous resource. There are different levels, there's standard membership and there's a level also. Again, another two-part question. First part is, do you think there may be benefit to stepping up our membership level? The second part is, I've almost exhausted all of the free online courses, and the continuing online courses are in the range of thirty-five dollars apiece. How would I go about, if I wanted to continue learning and growing as a school director, how would I go about taking those courses?
Take it out of your salary.
So, the, the first question, we, we feel that, I mean, I personally feel right now that, that what we've gotten included is what we've been utilizing. They've, they've kept it pretty level, went up a little bit this year. That we utilize the policy, that's where we get all of our policy changes, as I think you know, and then we review them as an administrative team, and if necessary, the board or solicitor go from there, and you, you go with those recommendations. We do get some of the items that you're talking about as part of this, and I think that's feasible. I, I think right now, that's, that's a good place. It's worked well for us in the years that we've used it, so I would recommend that we stay kind of where we're at in the system right now. And as far as your second question, I believe that, you know, board can ask for professional development, and I guess we would approve that in some, some way here at the board meeting.
Yeah, I, I, your two choices would be that you pay for it, or you ask in advance.
To have it.
To attend a seminar either, you know, somewhere or online, and then the board will vote on it.
And the one thing, Ken, that the P S B A is in, they're a business, and they keep expanding, and they add to staff, and a lot of the increase, and a lot of what you're paying for is more to support that than to get more workshops, you know, meaning the overall picture. For a district to gain any more out of it, is what I'm saying.
Right, well, I know that different membership levels do have, like, a lot of those online courses that.
Well, I know, it's just the courses, but you pay for a lot of the structure and all their other projects that they do. That's all I'm telling you.
I understand that, thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Pascarella alluded to the fact that we get our policies from the P S B A. And really, most of those policies are pretty much just a restatement of what various laws are. And if you go through the policies and look over on the left-hand side, they sort, they cite the different laws. So, that's a very useful service.
It's very helpful, because then they produce those general policies as the laws change annually, and then we have that available to us already changed, and then we could review that and make sure we're, we're recommending to you what's within the law.
They also make provisions, you know, based on statewide, you know, cases that they see, legal decisions that come out. You know, that, you know, a school district gets sued for something, and their policy maybe had a problem with it, so that they recommend statewide for schools to change their policies.
Are they still working on their school safety and security policy? Because I know the last time I talked with them.
Education moves slowly.
It's moving slowly, I know.
Now, they're still working on them.
Yeah, okay.
I think they also do some advocacy work at the state level, right?
Right, exactly, yeah.
Good, anything else? All in favor of item number seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. Policy Committee and Mr. Means.
Okay, we have one. Yeah, one item under the Policy Committee, and that's a second, three readings for policy number eighty-five-one, acceptable use of internet, computers, and network resources.
I have several questions about it. I'm sorry I didn't ask them that last week. I just did a cursory look last week, and I, I've read it more carefully since then. So, one of my questions is, usually we have separate policies for students and for staff, but it seems that this policy rolls, rolls it all into one, one policy. If anybody wants to follow along with what I'm asking, you can find it on the school district website under Finance, not under Finance, under School Board and Policies to be reviewed. But, so this pertains to both student and staff? So, if you, if you can't ask, answer any of the questions now, I think we don't do the final until next month. So, it's, is there any reason why it's, everybody rolled together if there's, there's not a, I mean, I, I understand the whole pornography and, you know, not using the internet for those kinds of things, but there are other things in here that I think would directly affect certain people.
Do you, do you remember any of those? I was, I can't remember.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through some of them.
Okay, good, yeah.
But, so on page three. It talks about users have no expectation of privacy in anything they create, store, send, delete, receive, or display. Personal files, district's use, and so forth and so on. And so, I was just wondering regarding that, if the student takes home files and uses the computer at home for, for use because they can take them back and forth? Or if the teacher takes it back and forth and creates files and uses this district's computer? how does that impact what this policy says?
Regardless of where they use it, it's our computer, so whatever they have on that computer is subject to access by the district. It's not to say that, that that's, you know, that, that people are monitoring everything, but that it is not, it's not your own computer, it's not your own, you know, files. So when you're creating things on the school district's computer, it is subject to review.
So say, as a teacher, you create something at home, you put it on a flash drive and bring it in, and up, not up, you know, use it on the district computer. Is it then now the district's, or is it still yours?
Well, it doesn't necessarily mean that you own it, we own it, the school district owns it. But, I mean, for example, I had a case in a school district where someone was bringing in pornography and using it, and using it on the school district's computer.
Yeah.
They brought it in, you know, but they were using our computer, they were using our access, so we have the right to access it and see what they're using our computer for.
So it's not-
Doesn't mean that we, doesn't-
So it's teacher-generated files that are not pornography-
Right.
Are not necessarily, like, the property of the school district. It's their, their teacher's files and so forth. Okay, and so then, if you look on page five, I think it is, I was trying to organize this. The, the aspect about the policy and they're going to sign user agreements. So are teachers and students going to sign user agreements to use the computers and the Internet in our school? It's in the middle, it's under four, delegation of responsibility. It's like the, the middle paragraph in red.
While, while they're looking that up, I can say that at work, when, you know, is that Nancy's in that, and Barry's still there, I mean, we, we sign Internet use agreements. So any employer, like the school district, being, and teachers being employees, we all have that responsibility of Internet usage, and we did have to sign agreements there. So I would not be surprised about this policy for that, based on what you read.
So I'm assuming that everyone at the beginning of the school year, or as soon as we approve this policy, will have to sign a computer usage agreement?
That's what the policy contemplates, yes.
Okay, and then I was wondering, I'm sorry, I'm trying to toggle back and forth between two things. On page eight, I think it is. Must not be page eight. Well, let me just generally ask these two questions then. So if, it says something about commercial use. So if I, and it says something about if you bring a cellphone in or a computer that you can't, and you log, not log into, but you use the school district's Internet, that this policy would apply to it. But if you don't, and, and you can't use a hotspot or anything like that. So if you don't log into the school district's Internet, it seems as if, the policy seems to state that you kind of have to log in, and, I mean, not log in, but use the, the school district's Internet. So say I have a job after school, maybe I teach at a university, and as I'm leaving school, I need to check something about my class that I'm going to teach at the university. Is that something that I cannot do now, because I do it for an income? Can I not now use the school district's? Or can I not even use my own phone? Say I'm selling my car, and during lunchtime, I go on my phone to see if somebody put in a bid for it on the Internet, on eBay or whatever. Is that prohibit, it's, what I read, it seems to be that all those things are prohibited. And that's kind of why I'm wondering why we have a student and staff policy together rather than, than separate. So I'm concerned about those things, and if, and you don't have to answer any of those questions. If you would read it for next meeting and answer some things for-
Well, the commercial, and, I mean, just, just, so the commercial or for-profit purposes was in there. That was already in the policy.
I saw that, it wasn't read, but I'm still wondering about that.
Isn't there normally a de minimis-
Yeah, I mean, you know-
Situation?
Right.
I mean, you can call your next job to see if you have to go in or something like that, as long as you're not-
The issue with all of these things is that these are policies that are saying, you know, look, and, and what we, what we would do about it is, is, you know, is it being abused? Are you using it for, you know, generally improper purposes? So, I mean, that's generally what all policies are, you know, I'm sure that it happens, but the, the policy prohibits it from, from, somebody from using our Internet and our computers to run a business. That's how I read it. Not to say that you can't ever-
To run, to run, but, but, I mean, I don't, I just don't want it to be a disciplinary, yeah.
You know, and, and that, that's what gets, you know, that's what I have seen that provision be used for. People who are, you know, working during school time for somebody else, and using our computers and our Internet to work for somebody else during school time-
Right, I understand that.
To run their own business when they're supposed to be teaching, or, you know, a student working when they're supposed to be in school or class. So, you know, that's what I've seen that provision be used for.
Well, and that thing can be timed on a computer. So if you're at lunch, it's a different-
Right.
Or if it's before school or after school, it'd be a different scenario.
Generally, from what I've seen, using somebody else's computer for your own business is a big no-no, whether it's on lunch, whether it's after work hours or whatever. I mean, the computer people say that is something you just aren't supposed to do.
I mean, our, our computers are, are given to employees and given to students to be used in general for student work related to school, and for teachers and staff for Bethel Park use. So, I mean, that, that's generally what these policies are saying, is that these are our computers that are given to whomever they're given to, students or staff, and they're expected to be used for our school purposes.
Right, and I understand that, and I did just find it, and it's on page three. It's the second paragraph from the bottom. So if it's your own personal device, are you required via that paragraph right there to use the network? Or can you, through your own personal device, like we can all go on to the Internet and not use the building? So the last couple sentences, these devices, once in a district building, may not be allowed to connect to an outside network or personal hotspot.
That's probably a question for Ron. Because I just don't know, you know, I mean, my, you know, my general legal opinion is that, you know, you can use your phone, and you don't have to be, you know, to use your phone, and you don't have to log on to Bethel Park's website-
Be connected to the Bethel Park district, so you could use it help, okay.
Internet to do that, but that would probably be a question for Ron.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. I know we're not voting on it tonight, but I just wanted to get some of those questions out there. If you would take a look at it, and everybody here, if you'd take a look at it and read through it?
One, one quick question for clarification. I'm not sure exactly where this section is about the user agreement, but like, I was assigned a Chromebook. Would board members be expected to sign that user agreement also? And if not, can we make it so board members are also subject to what the rest of the staff and student, staff and students are subjected to?
I mean, I, I, as I read it, the policy applies to students, staff, and-
It's as all users.
Any other authorized person, people who have access to our computers and our systems. So, I think it would apply to those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel, would you take other for me this evening?
Sure. Let me find it. There, I got it right here. Other, there's one item under other, student agreements. Would-
Second?
Move it.
Item one under other.
Would anyone want that held out? Any discussion? Can't be any discussion.
Item one under other has been moved by Mr. Nagel and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. All in favor of this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. We are now to public comments on anything you wish to address the board on. You have two minutes at the microphone, name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Dennis Pressman. I live in 204 Sunnybrook Court in Bethel Park. I'm employed by Bethel Park High School as a part-time security officer. In 2012, when I accepted the position, and during the interview, I said that I was not available for weekends during, because of families, and Sunday I go to church. So I was informed that weekends was not mandatory, that if I was asked to work a weekend, it was my choice. I could work a weekend, or I could turn it down. I did work some weekends. In March of this year, I was asked to work two Saturdays in March. I turned both of them down. I was written up for being in support of them, then I was given a day off without pay. I'm requesting a meeting with the school board to discuss this matter in more detail, as long, as well as other things that is going on right now. Officer Jim Mojack is at my interview, and he can confirm that I was told that weekends was not mandatory. I thank you.
Good evening, my name's Vince Scalzo. I live at eight three eight Volder Drive. My question is kind of piggybacking off of what you guys were talking about with curriculum. So, question is, well, first of all, I have three little boys that'll be entering the system. So I do really want to know the exact process of curriculum revision, the framework, the inner workings of that, that's really important to me. I'm a teacher in another district, so I would definitely like to know how that process is handled. Like to know if there is a committee or a curriculum council of some kind. How are the individuals picked? Who, who are they made up of? What's the time period for adopting maybe a new course? So, trying to think of any other, not only the timing of it, but... Well, I lost my train of thought, so apologize for that. Oh, yes, 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 online. I'm looking to see if there's online access to it. There is no online access to it. So that is a main concern for me, because as a parent in my, in another district, obviously, they can see the curriculum. I cannot see Bethel Park's curriculum at all. So that is something that I want to know, is, is there a way that that is available to me or to the public? Is there a program available? I know that, again, in the district that I work in, there is something called Atlas. Atlas is a web-based program that allows you to see the entire curriculum. You're looking at formative assessments, summative assessments, you're looking at the unit, every unit throughout the entire school year. So is that available? Is there a hard, like, hard copy? Is there something concrete? If parents really want to see something like that, how do I go about accessing that? So, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Shayna Willis, five eight four four Menongahela Avenue. Congrats on signing the secretary's contract two months early, that's amazing. Sadly, the paras remain without a contract, the paras and the HSNs for the last two and a half years. Just the other night, a friend of mine texted in, let me know that her son had been stabbed in the hand with a pencil because a student lost their temper in class. And the solution to that is, of course, to send the poor child who had been stabbed to the nurse, and to add a parrot to the classroom. So we're really using them in a lot of roles to solve a lot of problems that are in our district, and I don't feel like we're giving them the respect that they deserve. I did some digging, I love numbers, as you guys know. Two thousand six to two thousand sixteen, forty paras resigned, that's four a year, which is actually pretty average for school districts. In the last three years that we've been without a contract, forty paras resigned. So our resignation rate went from four to fourteen. I do think that this is tied to the fact that there is no contract for these paras, and I do wonder, because I was at the budget meeting, but I didn't see this listed in the budget. How much are we paying the solicitor to go to arbitration? I think the taxpayers would like to know that. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Dave Hoteling. My address is twenty-seven ten Bethel Crest Drive. However, my comments are going to be as a representative of the Granger Foundation and not as a resident of Bethel Park. I do just want to make clear in reference to the agenda item under Facilities and Maintenance Committee. I see that Granger is referenced as a vendor for potential purchase of the air compressors. I want to make very clear that I had absolutely no knowledge. That was on the agenda tonight, or that we were a vendor in contention for that. And I would like to make, just understood very clearly that the funds that we're donating tonight are for specific use for the elementary schools, and the funds that were contributed on behalf of the Granger Foundation are not in any way to be used to purchase any products whatsoever from W W Granger Industrial Supply under any circumstance. And if you guys would like to, you are more than welcome to submit a quid pro quo letter stating that fact, if you would choose to, to us here at the local level. Granger Industrial Supply, the address is two zero one R I D C Park West Drive, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, zip code one five two seven five. And you can address that to my attention if you would like. Thank you.
Thank you, good catch. You should be a lawyer.
I am Darren McGregor, fourteen oh seven Berryman Avenue. I want to piggyback off what Shayna was talking about, are the, is the lack of contract for our aides, support staff, et cetera. This has been going on for a little, what, two point eight years, all right? These are the first people our kids see. A lot of times, they're the last people, you know, people they see going home. They email, they call home, they put bandages on, on knees, they console kids. What are we doing to respect them? So, now, it's come to my understanding that negotiator for district has only attended eight percent of all negotiated time. Eight percent. I think we need to do better. I know we could do better than that. So if our kids came home with an eight percent on their report card, we wouldn't be too happy. Let's give these people the respect they need, okay? And it starts with you guys, everyone. All right, thank you.
Hi, Sharon Janasik, four three one four Anna Street. Mr. Scalzo, I did that once. I had to make an appointment through my principal with Building Administration here, come in person and sit in the lobby and review the curriculum.
This is, you're attending the board at this point.
So that's, that is what I needed to do, to look at the curriculum. I did want to talk about something that's been coming up a bunch with textbooks and curriculum. I found out that the fifth grade reading doesn't have a textbook. I guess it wasn't updated after P A Common Core started. And what the class is using are worksheets that are completed in class- Um, and, uh, what the class is using are worksheets that are completed in class by the students for examples, which I, I guess is what's supposed to be their reference. Um, and I did have a conversation with the principal about that, and I understand his perspective that perhaps purchasing an entire textbook series is not necessarily appropriate or necessary if teachers are finding other resources, and I can understand that perspective. However, I think that ten and eleven-year-old children, um, should have, and their parents who are trying to help them at home, should have access to correct resource material to review, reteach, prepare for tests. Um, so while I could see, perhaps, not necessarily wanting to purchase a textbook series for that, I do think that we have to remember, the other aspect of a textbook is a resource and reference of correct information for students and their families. Um, and maybe that is something we can compromise on, or at least make sure if we don't have a textbook of those resources, that there's something online everyone can access. It was just a thought I had to try to work things together. Thank you.
Mrs. Cook, may I make a statement? I know it's kind of unusual.
Uh, well, can we finish up with the other comments? Thanks.
Evening, folks. Jim Mojak, 6018 Ramsgate Drive here in Bethel Park. Mr. Pressman approached me a few weeks ago about a dilemma he's having. I'm here just to confirm what he said regards to his interview and his hiring, because I was the supervisor at the time, and that was agreed that he would not be forced to work weekends. He was a part-time employee, uh, he would help out if he could, but definitely he was not assigned to work Sundays, and he was not required to work Saturdays unless he confided in his schedule. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll move to board comments, Mr. Means.
Yeah, I, I would just like to make a comment that, you know, the issue of textbooks has come up a couple of times, and, and we as a board don't really get involved in textbook selection, uh, selection. That comes to us from the, from the teachers and the administration up. And certainly, we aren't opposed to buying textbooks for somebody if they need the textbooks. And, uh, the comment was made a compromise, and, and as far as I'm concerned, there's no compromise. Our job is to support the staff and the teachers, and when they ask us for stuff that they need for their classroom, we almost always say yes. I mean, I can't, I can't think of, one time we said no. The only time there was any of an issue, anything of an issue in all was Wonders Program, where we're somewhat reluctant to get into the, uh, intensity of the Wonders Program at the kindergarten level. But we've never hesitated to spend money to give the staff the support and the resources they needed.
Thank you. Any other board comments?
Just one clarification on that. There, it is a little bit of, I've had people talk to me about that. It's a little bit of a catch-22 where, yes, we, we authorize the purchase of the textbooks, but in order for the textbook purchase to be recommended, it takes a curriculum committee to be formed, and the administration has to, has to authorize that curriculum committee. That's kind of in general terms how I understand it. So it's a little bit of a catch-22 in terms of how, how those textbooks actually get recommended and purchased.
I'm not sure that's exactly true. I think we've purchased textbooks without having to go through a curriculum committee before. I think if there was a big curriculum overhaul, we would have to have a curriculum committee, but we've purchased untold numbers of things to support without going through a big, uh, committee process.
Yeah, if there's a textbook change, which is going to lead to a curriculum change, I mean, that's what I've been told. I mean, maybe Joey can clarify that.
I, I think what, from, from my perspective, as I think I said earlier, but I'll try to be clear again, that, you know, if there is a need, um, as there was for, you know, ELA, um, in K to four or seven to eight, and if there is a need, uh, they would work their way up for, if we're going to purchase a major resource or redo the entire curriculum based upon the standards and eligible content, we would then have a committee. But oftentimes, we're not going to, my, this is my opinion, we would not have a committee if we're looking to, you know, supplement and, and buy additional resources and materials to supplement gaps in the current resources that we do have. One of the reasons why I think that's important is because if a teacher one day realizes, look, my kids, when looking at the data, are really struggling in this area, I'd like to get some additional resources, whether those are online or physically purchasing them, we want to be able to do that in a timely fashion. We want to be able to get them their resources now, not go through a long, drawn-out process. Now, if it's a major overhaul where you're getting an entire new, new resource and you need to write to create a major resource such as Wonders, then that's something that's we're going to have to get a group together to give input, possibly pilot, and those types of things. So, that's kind of where I see it.
Dr. Passerell, I would also like you to address the one, uh, comment made about negotiations.
Yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity, because, um, you know, I'm pretty disappointed. I'm the chief negotiator, so I'm glad that this, you know, is getting out there and that somebody brought it up, because I don't know where this percentage is coming from, but Mr. Karazi is also with me at these, um, at these meetings, and I've never missed one meeting ever for any negotiation. Matter of fact, I miss very little, to be truthful, as does Mr. Karazi or any of our administration at anything in the school system, let alone negotiations. So, I've, I've never missed a negotiation session, let alone not been there eight percent, because actually I would agree that that would be, um, as you said, an eight percent, that'd be a horrible grade for a student to only show up. Wouldn't show interest, it wouldn't show respect. So, I'm not sure where that's coming from or who made that statement, but I don't miss negotiations.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cook, I just want to say something. I rarely say something about comments that are made here, but I really take exception and get angry when someone tells me I do not respect or value an employee at any level. And you, I've heard several times you've mentioned that to us about respecting the paras. You have two people up here that reformer paras. We respect that job, we value it, we know what they do. So I please ask that you afford us the same courtesy of giving us that respect too. We do recognize their value, any of our employees. Thank you.
Agreed.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Wait a second. Let's say one other thing. This is a good news thing. I was really impressed by that Facebook Live bedtime story. That was really neat. So, kudos to Ben Franklin, that was really cool.
Yeah, there's a lot of kudos, uh, as, I'm sure, as a whole board, I might speak for the board, but I'm sure that everybody would agree with what we saw up there with the donations and successes and first places and all this. I mean, we won't go through it, but, uh, I, I'm very pleased with Bethel Park's, uh, school, uh, the administrators and, and the students for all the work they do, and the parents for helping them achieve these high goals, you know.
Thank you, thank you for ending on a positive note. As we start on a positive note, I like to end on a positive note.
And I'd also like to, you know, you reminded me, I almost forgot to mention, uh, we were very well represented at the American Legion Youth Achievement Dinner also. I don't know if, I can't remember if it was eight or ten Bethel Park students, and these are high-achieving students, typically a four point five grade point average or better, uh, usually, uh, has other areas they excel in, either scouts or sports or music. It says a lot that we were so well represented at that also. Yeah.
Mrs. Cook?
Ms. Coach, may I?
Yes, Mrs. Buckley.
Okay, and if you can hear me or not, uh, I just want to make a quick comment as far as the agenda item D, the presentation tonight. I just want to thank the first three folks, I won't go through all the names, as far as their generosity and their positive effort that they are doing with our children and all the employees, and their efforts are most appreciated. And also I want to say that Joelle Dixon and the team of people that work with her, their dedication is beyond measure. They help keep our students and every employee safe. So personally, a heartfelt thank you to all involved who go above and beyond their daily responsibilities to protect our students and employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cook, there's also going to be a formal kickoff of the Healthy Allegheny Alliance between the, uh, the district and the borough, and that's going to happen also at the May Fourth event down at, uh, yeah.
What is that?
Healthy Allegheny.
Healthy Allegheny.
Okay.
I, I think we're going to be maybe the only or one of the, one or two only communities where both the school district and the borough, the administration, you're both in it.
Okay, anything else? Now can I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you. Thanks.